Call this meeting to order. Please stand for my allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, verity, and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have the advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star-Ledger newspapers, tap into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dye. Mr. Marzullo.
Here.
Mr. Shoner. Mrs. Miga.
Here.
Mrs. Dora.
Here. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
At this time, the meeting is open to the public for any comments on the agenda only. We do not have anyone who signed up, so I close that portion. And we move to committee reports. I have a bunch of committee reports, or a bunch of things to talk about today. It was a busy month. So, on March 25th, I attended the district's art showcase at Memorial Middle School. It was just so exciting to see the community come together to celebrate all the fantastic artwork completed by our students, as well as enjoy the choral and instrumental performances. So that was really an amazing experience. On April 2nd, I attended the autism puzzle tournament. The Realize Puzzle for Autism Tournament was held at the high school. What an exciting event for all ages and a fantastic way to spread awareness and acceptance of differences, along with raising funds for autism organizations. On April 1st, I attended the South End Tricky Tray Event at Ravello's, where 100% of the proceeds of this event is going to the addition of playground equipment at South End School in honor of Nikki Storms. Thank you, Cedar Grove, for all your generosity. On April 9th, I attended the production of high school musical Junior, where our middle school students performed. What a great job by all our students who participated in that production, and what a great evening that was. On March 29th, I attended Mr. Grosso's EDAC meeting. At that meeting, Mr. Grosso announced that moving forward, the committee will be led by one of our community members, Dr. Reverend Sarah Welch-Pomerance. She's from Cedar Grove Community Church. There was discussion about renaming the committee and incorporating ways to broaden the scope of topics covered, specifically some of the fallout around our community and our neighboring communities relating to the opioid epidemic. Facilities, the facilities committee continues to meet on a pretty regular basis, moving forward, hopefully moving forward to presenting to the community some opportunities to receive input regarding the most financially responsible way to address the overcrowding in our elementary schools. And the last thing I'd like to talk about is, I would like to publicly thank the town council for their generous contributions to the education of our children with the pilot money. They will be providing the school district with $1.2 million for the next 25 years. The formal agreement will be approved at the next Board of Education meeting. That was a busy month for me, so, Mrs. Miga?
Hello to everyone here and watching at home. I hope everyone enjoyed their spring break, and hopefully some nice spring weather lies ahead. March 25th, I also was at the district-wide art show, which was more than just art. It also showed great musical talent and a sense of community for all ages. The students and staff did a wonderful job. The talent we have in Cedar Grove and the dedicated staff members is really great to see. April 2nd, I also attended the Special Services Autism Awareness Puzzle Event. It was a very nice event, again with very dedicated staff and volunteers to make this event a success. April 11th, 14th, and 22nd, we had finance meetings to work on budgeting for the upcoming school year. I also attended town council meetings on April 4th and April 8th, according to my notes.
Yeah.
Am I right?
Yes.
I would like to extend a big thank you as well to the mayor and council for the pilot money the district will be receiving starting this year and for 25 years there to come. April 5th and April 7th, I briefly attended both the North End and South End Spring Concerts. Always a great way to see the students as they were smiling in a gym full of happy family members, friends, and staff. What a great job, and both were very well attended, and I think the kids did a great job from what I saw. Looking ahead, just a reminder that Cedar Grove has partnered with Verona for a Wellness Fair event. This event will be on May 14th from 12 to 3 at the Civic Center in Verona. Information has started to come out via email, but I'm sure now that you're back from spring break, there'll be more forthcoming. Also, just a reminder, on April 30th from 12 to 3, there was an Autism Taught Me Event that's on the grass on Route 23. I don't know the exact address. I think it's in between, like, Food Town and Coyote, that glass building.
Oh, okay.
I think that's where it is. And also, the Municipal Alliance Committee will have a program on May 1st. It's called "In Your House." It's about drug addiction in America, and that's at 3:00 PM at Community Church. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Miga.
You're welcome.
Mr. Marzullo?
Excellent. Thank you. Good evening. Certainly sound busy, so, excellent job. I attended the rec board meeting this past month. Just a couple announcements I'd like to make from that meeting, that the 4th of July fireworks presented by the town council and the rec department are going to be on June 30th with the rain date of July 1st. Ms. Landoffi also announced that evening that July 15th, Jackals will host the Cedar Grove Night at Yogi Bear Stadium, so that'd be a great event to attend with your family. And I'm not sure if they were doing fireworks after that, that evening also, at the Jackals game, but Friday night, they normally do, so I'm gonna assume, I'm gonna say yes. And then, I'd like to also mention that, you know, the Panther Park has begun being, began being utilized by the high school and the rec programs. It's a great location for when our fields are underwater and stuff, for the high school to move to, and the younger kids have been enjoying the time on Panther Park, too. I also had the opportunity to attend a curriculum meeting led by Mr. Grosso, Ms. Barbosa, Mr. Pearson, and myself and Ms. Dora were in attendance at the curriculum meeting. Ms. Barbosa presented on the K-6 curriculum, spoke about some phonics programs, Foundation K-3, they're going to hold a professional development for grade levels in May and June, and the Hegarty Phonics Awareness Supplement Program will be one of the electives, I'm sorry, and they also will be continuing the writer's workshop. Mr. Baer presented on behalf of the high school and discussed the course requirements and electives that they have, mentioned that they will be continuing the dual enrollment program with Montclair State University. Also like to mention the start of the UTI program and the robotics programs that we have started to implement here at Cedar Grove. He also shared the selection of the honors courses, classes, and how differentiated instruction can offer an opportunity for all level learners in the future. So that's something that we should have an opportunity to look forward to for all the children in Cedar Grove, an opportunity to take some honors level courses. That was, and I also like to, on behalf of myself and the rest of the Board of Education, like to thank the mayor and town council, again, obviously, for that generous pilot money that they have offered for the school for the next many years.
Thank you, Mr. Marzullo. Okay, we're gonna start this evening off with some presentations. Our first presentation, Ms. Jessen is here, and she will be presenting on Music Matters' Hershey Park Overnight Trip.
Is it just to speak here?
Do you have anything up here?
No, it's just a one pager.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's been a while since the music department has taken a trip. We all know why. And so, we thought that we would try to put together a one-night adventure for them, and starting here, and having a festival that's adjudicated by High Note Festivals, music educators would come to our building, and we'd be able to set up right here on our stage, and the band and orchestra and choir get adjudicated in the morning at 8:00. And then, get on a motor coach to go to Hershey Park and spend the day at the park. And then, at closing, at 7:00 PM, board the bus, and we'd be staying at the Days Inn, right there near Hershey Park, one mile away, and Music Matters providing a pizza dinner for them, and there's a pool. And then Saturday, having breakfast at the hotel, returning to Hershey Park but to go to Chocolate World. I haven't been there myself, but I'm excited. And then noon, get on the bus to return home to Cedar Grove. And the pricing's there for $200 per person, the music festival participation, the round-trip bus transportation, we were lucky to find through Camilla Tours, and it has seat belts, a bagel breakfast for them on Friday morning after their adjudication, the Hershey Park admission, the pizza dinner, the hotel, the breakfast, and a T-shirt that they would all wear at the park. And many of the students have fundraising money left from when we didn't attend our Florida trip, March 2020. So, that's about it. Any questions?
I actually have a couple simple ones.
Yes.
How many students do you estimate about?
We have currently 30 students interested, you know, and committed with a deposit, whether using it through their fundraising credits, or they've already put down a deposit.
And how many adults?
It'd be myself, Mr. Savino, the orchestra teacher, Mr. Catalo, and we do have a special needs student whose mother would be attending, so four.
Thank you.
Can I ask the dreaded, what are the COVID parameters here?
Well, recently on our grease trip, we wore masks everywhere. When we were sometimes outside at the large, you know, ancient ruins, the masks would come down for a picture.
I mean, more like, if someone gets COVID, do they get their money back? Is there any COVID restrictions in place that would cancel his trip? Or do they need to be vaccinated? Do they need to be, you know what I'm saying?
Right, right.
Like, bad kind of stuff, masks, I...
Yes, the vaccinations.
So they have to be vaccinated to go?
Yes, yes.
Do they have to be boosted?
I could, I could find that out.
I'm just curious, because I've sat here for a little while.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand. I could, I'll definitely pursue more of that questioning, and I know at Hershey Park, they have online...
They probably have their own policy.
Yeah, they have their own policies, so, and of course, I'll do whatever, you know, is needed for the school policies as well.
Right, right.
Good question.
Thank you.
But certainly, Music Matters would reimburse them if they were not, if they were unable to attend the trip.
Yeah, I mean, because you're just like, I'm not saying you have to test, maybe you're not requiring whoever the bus, or whoever might not be requiring you to test, because it's a domestic trip, not an international trip.
Right, right.
But if somebody does happen to get it right before they go, what's, what's in place, is what I'm saying.
Right.
I do have one question. Just the bus transportation, is that gonna be outsourced, or?
Yes, yes, we did, because we're doing that through Music Matters, yes. It's, it's been hard to find buses at that time of year, and like, lots of other festivals. That's why we want to host the festival here, because Hershey Park is not allowing the festivals to be, you know, to sing outside the park or inside the park.
So are other people coming here for the festival?
No, I did, I did reach out and invited, like, Passaic Valley, I have a colleague high school band there, who is actually interested in doing something similar to what we do with the ice hockey, and, you know, trying to get a marching band kind of joint program going. So I did ask him if he'd be interested in attending, just to play and get adjudicated, but that's still up in the air.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
People from the audience don't get these questions. People don't get these questions.
Excuse me, at this time, you can't ask any questions about that, Mr. Stringer.
Can I just? Just to be clear, I still have to pursue that question.
Thank you. Okay, our next presentation, we have the 22-23 Budget Hearing. Mr. DeVita?
We're going over yonder?
Yeah, because I can't turn my head.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody hear me okay? Hold this. Everybody hear me okay? All righty. Welcome to the presentation of our budget for next school year, the 2022-23 year. This screen here... All right. Anybody hear me okay? Hold this. Everybody hear me okay? All righty. Welcome to the presentation of our budget for next school year, the 2022-23 year. This screen here... All right. All right. This screen here just shows a, basically a timeline for how our budget starts. From around November, December, so, was when the process starts, when all the information is sent to the principals and directors, and they gather all their information together, and they submit it both to myself and the superintendent, and then we gather everything together, then we meet with the finance committee from the February to March period, and then March 8th of this year, state aid figures were released. Normally, it's always the last, the governor does his budget address the last Tuesday of February. This year, it was delayed a couple weeks, so our stated figures were delayed also. But the good news is that we did see an increase in state aid. We got an increase of $322,000 for the 22-23 year, but our debt service state aid was decreased by $788. And then, March 21st, we approved our preliminary budget, and then on March 31st, the county superintendent approved our preliminary budget. And here we are tonight, presenting the final budget. These numbers here, they're just a little bit different than the preliminary budget. I'll explain why in some future slides, but this slide here just shows the summary of all of our expenditures and the total budget. I'll go into a bit more detail into each category, but you can see a comparison from our current year to what we're proposing for next school year. We have our instructional programs, which basically includes all salaries, supplies, textbooks, any purchase services for any regular instruction programs is included here. In special education, this number is staying study. This number includes all salaries, supplies, any purchase services for the child study team. We do have some programs, LLD, Resource Room, we have a preschool disabilities program, and also a multiple disabilities program that's included here, and also all of our added district tuition for our special education students is included here, so that is a big number. And next is our employee benefits. This number is increasing by about $375,000. This includes all expenses for social security, pension, workers' comp, tuition reimbursement, and the big one is health benefits. Health benefits includes our medical, dental, and prescription plans. That's the majority of the amount here. Next is our support services. This includes all expenses for attendance, health services, guidance services, school administration, and the general administration, central services such as my office, IT, transportation, and co-curricular, and athletics. And lastly here in the operating fund is operations and maintenance budget. This includes all maintenance, custodial, grounds, any security expenses, and also capital expenses are included in this budget. So this brings our proposed for the next school year, our total operating budget at 34, a little over 34 and a half million dollars, which is an increase of a little over a million dollars from the current school year. Our special revenue fund, there is a big increase here, and this is mainly because we do, we do get, we got, our SR3 funds are included in here. We haven't, we spent a little bit of it, but not, the majority of it will still be spent in the next school year, and also includes any state grants also, such as IDA and ESEA also. Our debt service fund, this includes any principal and interest expenses for the bonds that have already been, that have been issued by the district and approved. So this brings our total annual budget, if you add everything up here, to just under $39 million for the school year, and it's about a little over a million and a half change. This here is our, shows our operating budget, and as you can see, the local tax levy makes up the majority of our budget. We are increasing, it's a proposed 2% increase. If you remember at our, when our preliminary budget was approved, we weren't going to the 2% because we had to reduce it because of Chapter 44. We did do an appeal, and that was heard by the, by the county office and the state, and they, they accepted our appeal, so we're now able to increase the 2%, which is good for us. So this, this shows the increase here, and our state, local tax levy makes up about 86.65% of our operating revenue. Next, which is new for this year, as you heard, some of our board members thanked the township for pilot money, that we didn't have this in our current year, and next year, it's $1.2 million is factored in. This number wasn't factored into our preliminary budget, so now it's factored into our final budget, and we were able to put back items into the budget that were cut or we had to reduce, and we were able to also reduce some of our reserves that we were gonna be putting money into. Now it's not, so this is gonna financially help us out for years to come. The next line shows our budget fund balance. This is basically unused surplus that is carried over, that we're required to put in our budget as per our audit. The next two, we have our decreases. We used to rent out the first floor of our LRP building to the Essex Junior Academy. That lease has, is concluding at the end of this school year, so the rental income and also the custodial services is not, that income is not factored into the budget for next year. We do have tuition, that's been factored in, we do receive some money from our pre-care program, and also our, we do receive, our progressions program, we'll be receiving a few students from Verona for next year, and we also receive a student from Glen Ridge for our program in the middle school. So that shows that total. Our aftercare program, we are contracted with Alphabet, and the $60,000 is what the minimum is as per the contract, so that's factored in there. Our interest income is any interest that we receive from the banks for all of our funds. Miscellaneous income is basically any E-rate funds that we receive from the government, and any prior year refunds, or any miscellaneous income that's, I'm not expecting, is included in here. Transportation, we do receive funds from parents that, that ride our buses, that are not eligible to receive, to be able to ride the bus here. If we do have room on the bus, we do offer them a contract to ride the bus. And the bottom two are for special education, our extraordinary aid. These are funds that we receive from the state for sending out special education students, and then new to this, this year, semi is federal funds that we receive for special education students through Medicaid. The last slide for our revenue here, prior year encumbrances, this is more just to show an amount for the current school year. It's funds that were encumbered at the end of last school year, June 30, 2021, and that gets carried over into the new budget. The next year, our state aid, as I mentioned earlier, it has increased $322,000, so that is factored in here, and we're not withdrawing any money from maintenance reserve, as I mentioned, with the pilot money that we received, we're able to reduce that, so we were able to save that for future years. So this shows that our operating revenue is increasing a little over a million dollars, or it's a little over 3%, 3.13% to be exact. So this shows our total operating expenses, total the same amount as our revenues here. And this just goes into a little bit more detail of what the, is included in the instructional programs, as I mentioned earlier, all the salaries, but it shows all the regular education programs. We have our basic skills in ESL, media services, and any instructional staff training is included in here, so this shows this increase as just under $500,000 was being proposed for next school year. Special education, the top line here shows all of our, the instruction part of it here, so it's all the salaries and supplies and all that for all of our programs, added district tuition. We do have 26 special education students that go to private or public schools that are sent out, so that's included in here, and we are able to offset some of this expense through our IDA grant. Related in extraordinary services is just some in-house speech personnel, any therapy interventionists, or anything that we offer our special education services is included in here. So this number is remaining constant because we were able to reduce our, some of our tuition expenses. Next, we have our employee benefits here. This is broken out into our social security, which is any payments to the state for non-certified staff, such as secretaries or custodians. Retirement contributions, these are pension payments for the same non-certified staff. Workers' comp includes the premium for any, the insurance coverage for everybody, tuition reimbursement as per our contract, other contractual obligations, this number is decreasing in next school year because we don't have as many employees retiring, so we don't have to pay out as much sick payout to them. And as I mentioned, the health benefits is the majority of this number here, it is going up to almost $5.8 million for next school year. Support services here, this includes our attendance and health services and guidance, basically any, any services that are related to the students here, administrative expenses, include any, you know, salaries for essential office staff, attorney's fees, audit fees, many professional fees are included in here. This is a continuation of transportation, this number is increasing for next school year. I have some slides at the end here that you'll see, but we are proposing to purchase some new buses for next school year, three 16-passenger buses and one 54-passenger bus, so including this salary is the salary expense that we have to do that, when by purchasing the buses, this is gonna help us decrease our services in future years. And also athletics and co-curricular are included in this part of the budget. Our operations and maintenance here includes any maintenance and custodial and ground services, and anything that, that we use to maintain the buildings, any repairs or anything is included in this budget here. And capital outlay includes the, this is where the, the four buses are included in the budget here. This slide here, I'd just like to try to combine everything in the budget and just do an analysis. I try to break the budget into three categories. Personnel, student, and other costs, such as professional costs, these are more the fixed costs that we have to spend, and then we have the discretionary costs, such as supplies and everything that, you know, we're not required to spend, that we don't have to. So it shows you like personnel costs, which includes all salaries, benefits, pension, and all that there, that amounts to just under 78% of the budget. That amounts to just under seventy-eight percent of the budget is included there. Student expenses are more for special education, any out-of-district expenses, transportation and all that. That's about just under thirteen percent of the budget. And other costs such as energy, our PSNG costs and all that is included in here, any legal and professional fees are included in here. So basically our, the fixed costs in our budget amounted to just under ninety-four percent, meaning that just over six percent is included in our discretionary funds where we can, you know, supplies, any facility repairs, and equipment, or textbooks, and athletics, and all that. So I always just like to show this, to see what our fixed costs are every year. Our new items that are in the budget for next year, we do have three new paraprofessional positions for special education. We do have one new teaching position for class size. We have one new occupational therapist, which will help us reduce some out-of-district expenses. And then the, the bus drivers are included here. We are estimating to have future savings of approximately a hundred thirty thousand dollars every year by purchasing the buses, by purchasing them ourselves and hiring our own drivers, and we won't have to rely on the, the transportation companies. As Ms. Jessen mentioned before, it's very hard to find, you know, companies to transport the students, and when you do, you know, the expenses have been increasing. Our MSU clinicians, we did start using this, this school year through one of our grants. So in next school year, it's, it's going to be included in our general budget. This is for any regular education students that are in need of counseling services. And we will continue to implement our one-to-one initiatives. So all students in grades one, five, and nine will be receiving their Chromebooks. So the tax impact for our operating budget, it's estimated at the average increase for the average assessed house, which is a four hundred seventy-three thousand dollars for next school year. The average increase annually is a hundred eleven dollars. The average per month is nine dollars and twenty-seven cents. Per week is two dollars and fourteen cents, and per day is thirty cents. And the estimated school tax rate increase is one point six-seven percent. And that concludes the presentation. Thank you. At our last board meeting, it was asked about some attorney fees for how much was spent on the survey, and I also believe the ethics complaints. So I did look into our expenses, and from July two thousand twenty-one to February two thousand twenty-two, the survey expenses for our attorney fees were sixteen thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars and fifty cents, and the ethics complaints came to nineteen thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
All right. Thank you, Mr. DeVita. Did a great job.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right. Next up on our agenda is our superintendent update. Mr. Grosso?
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to start off, I'm going to echo a lot of what you all said. We were there together, so...
Sorry, we beat you to it.
You did.
Yes.
You did. So I just wanted to share with, you know, with the district, the arts staff did a wonderful job in organizing the district arts showcase. I mean, there was, from pre-k to twelfth grade, there was two D art, there was music, there was, there's actual, you know, instrumental, but there's also performance, and it was just, it was outstanding. And it was on a Friday afternoon, on a half-day, and the place was packed.
It was packed.
So it was very impressive, and I look forward to the tradition that was created this year for many years to come. It really showcased a lot of our art students. And I also want to thank Joes in town, and also Sippin' Swirl, because that added a nice little feature to the event. I also wanted to share that I as well went to the autism awareness puzzle tournament, which is April, which is Autism Awareness Month. That was fantastic. I went there early in the morning. I know they got a lot more crowded as the day continued with the adult puzzles, but it was a really nice time. We all had a chance in putting together the town puzzle, which was, which was good. But we had a great time. It was April, April second. It was, that was sponsored by Realize, and also the Cedar Grove Special Education Department. I also want to say that it was very nice to see when I went to the South End Tricky Tray, the amount of people that came out and supported.
Yes.
It was huge, and it was great. Really, really nice event, so that was really nice to see. I as well went to the elementary spring concerts. I want to give a big thank you to Bob Savino and Maggie Stroh. They did a wonderful job in getting the students prepared and performing, and it was packed. And especially at South End, where sometimes you couldn't even get into the, into the gym. It was, it was, it was, it was great. What a wonderful display of, of the arts. I also had the opportunity to go to the, it was really the first annual, the first, I'm saying the first annual, it was the first advanced placement breakfast, which was the AP breakfast. So there was, it was on April fourteenth. The high school actually had donuts, bagels, and just a big celebratory, kind of pep rally for our AP students. There was around, there was a hundred and nine students that were eligible to take that test. That's a huge amount. When you're looking at a little under five hundred students, that's a good portion of students that were going to be taking the AP test. So had a good, nice opportunity to speak to the students, had a nice opportunity to talk to some of the students individually, and that was a really nice, nice event. So that was great. Also wanted to just share that the Verona and Cedar Grove Mental Wellness Festival is going to be on May fourteenth, twelve to three. It's going to be on the Civic Center on the lawn in Verona. So I know there'll be a table there, so we, you know, come out and visit everybody, and it's a nice, it's a nice collaborative event between the two towns. Also, this is everybody's favorite time of year, the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments. That is, students in grades three through nine will engage in assessments next month in the areas of math and language arts. Also, the NJSLA science will be administered to grades five, eight, and eleven. So that is the first time in two years that all students across the state of New Jersey will be back to taking a standardized test, aside from the Start Strong test that we had at the beginning of the school year. Also, I'd like to share that there's been a lot of conversation around the New Jersey Comprehensive Health and Physical Education Standards. So I just want to speak a little bit about that. You know, we here in Cedar Grove, we're currently revising the curriculum through this summer for those disciplines required to be implemented in September twenty-two. So the NJSLS dated back on two thousand twenty, that's the comprehensive health standards. There are no lesson plans developed yet for any of these standards. The key to our implementation of the standards is an emphasis on age appropriateness. And I wanted to share that again with the board, that we are looking at creating lessons that are age appropriate to the standards. The standards have changed slightly from two thousand fourteen, which changed six years later, but we are committed to making sure that the lessons that are created and the curriculum that is created will be age appropriate, because essentially what the state has placed and put out is not curriculum. What it merely is, is just guidance on what they were looking for as a standard. So we will be creating that. We also will be holding a parent and caregiver information sessions during the month of May. This will allow families and caregivers to come out and ask questions about the standards, ask questions about what our intentions are with the curriculum. It'll also allow people to share their concerns, too, and their feedback about that. But more information will follow as we settle those dates, and we will push those out to the public ASAP. And I also want to, like, you know, the rest of the board that's here tonight, I want to thank the township of Cedar Grove, especially the mayor council and township manager Tom Tucci, for their partnership in, in providing pilot, pilot money to help us move forward for the next twenty-five years at one point two million dollars. That's an investment in our children's future here in Cedar Grove, and that will certainly, as you can tell from Mr. DeVita's presentation, which was excellent, excellent job, it will help supplement and offset costs as we move forward, and help us to build new programming.
Yeah.
So that's it. That's all I have for tonight.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let me move along here. Under minutes, can I have a motion to approve B one through B five?
So move.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Under bills, can I have a motion to approve B six?
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
No.
Roll call?
Mrs., Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Under business, can I have a motion to approve B seven through B fifteen, please?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Under personnel.
Sorry.
Can I have a motion to approve S one through S nineteen, please?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. And under contract.
Can I go back?
Yes, you may.
Should we make this known?
Oh, yes, yes.
S nineteen, maybe we...
S nineteen. I just want to clarify S nineteen, or just make it, highlight it. S nineteen is a motion to approve an adjustment to the twenty-one, twenty-two district calendar to reflect the use of two available emergency closing days on Thursday, May twenty-sixth, and Tuesday, May thirty-first. So we will be extending Memorial Day weekend. So mark your calendars. Thank you, Ms. Miga.
You're welcome.
And under contracts, can I have a motion to approve S twenty?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Okay. At this point, the meeting's open to the public for comments on or off the agenda. The Board of Ed recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Public participation shall be governed by the following rules. Please preface comments by stating your name, your address, your municipality of residence, and any group affiliation if applicable. Please be mindful of your statement length and keep each statement to the three-minute limit. Participants may not speak more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. Please direct all statements, questions, or inquiries to the presiding officer, and any questions or inquiries directed by a participant to another board member shall be redirected to the presiding officer, who shall determine if such statement, question, or inquiry shall be addressed by the presiding officer on behalf of the board or by the individual board member. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, and/or terminate a participant's statement, question, or inquiry if it is too lengthy, too abusive, obscene, or maybe inflammatory. These rules may be waived if necessary to protect privacy or to maintain an orderly operation of the board meeting. Tonight, we have four people who have signed up. First, we have Mr. Kowicki.
Mr. DeVita, great presentation. Thank you for the information, too. It's been very helpful. My, my assumption is that the, the budget year is July one through June thirty.
Yes.
Which coincides with pilot.
Yes.
Great. Ms. Dora, I hate to put you on the spot, but I really would like an answer to an email I sent you about a month ago relative to when does public comment become harassment?
Sure, actually.
I have no idea if this microphone is on or not.
Can I use mine?
Here.
I'll use this one. There you go. So there's a great deal of leeway in public comment in a school board meeting because there is a First Amendment. And the First Amendment allows people to say things even if other people might be offended by them or disagree with them. The, there's a lot of law which says that school board meetings are not pure First Amendment forums, but they're what are called limited First Amendment forums. And that distinction is what gives school boards the right to put time limits on how long people may speak, to impose reasonable rules and regulations, such as the kind that the president read before, before you spoke, and before anyone else speaks. But harassment is somewhat in the eye of the beholder. And, you know, it's sort of, I don't know that I can say more than that people know it when they see it, if it's mean-spirited or intended to injure rather than to have dialogue. I think that's the kind of thing that a board president doesn't have to, but has the right to stop. But there is a lot of leeway under the First Amendment given to what members of the public say. Unfortunately for the dialogue, that same leeway doesn't apply to the board members. They're limited in what they can say. For example, you may feel free to stand up and, I'll just say this hypothetically, you may feel free to stand up and criticize a staff member. But the board can't discuss a personnel issue in public, so it will sit silent while you say whatever you're going to say. I think that the board president's statement probably included, if it didn't, it's the law anyway, a line which says that even though members of the public have a First Amendment right to stand up and say pretty much whatever it is they wish to say, that does not insulate them from the laws against defamation, or insulate them from somebody who thinks they've been defamed, turn around and suing them. I, I fully appreciate that I'm talking in generalities and not specifics, but that's because the question can only be answered in generalities. So I hope that helps.
Is there any thing that I can read that will inform me more about the differences between public comment and harassment in a public setting?
If the board president would like me to, I will provide her with some already published materials on that, and she could share them with you.
That'd be great.
Sure. Be happy to do that.
Thanks very much. Thanks for your time, and thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kowicki. Next, we have Marlena O'Connor, I believe.
Hello. I'm Marlena Connor. I live at eighteen Woodstone Drive in Cedar Grove. Regarding the news about the changes to...
Well, Mr. Grosso, maybe you can speak to that a little bit, too, because EDEC is actually your committee. It's not a board committee, but I certainly will join in with you.
Well, I had a conversation with Reverend. It was brought to my attention that she had done work in this area, especially at her, within her congregation. And sat down, had a meeting, and she shared her interest in some of the very similar, some of the similar things that we are trying to do within the district as well as, you know, across the state with recognizing diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we did have that first meeting. And then the Reverend and I had a meeting afterwards. And I had shared with the Reverend that there was some... There was some dissension from the group and some questions about what was going on. So we, at the last meeting, so we talked a lot, and she had shared her reservations on certain topics that we were talking about. And, you know, I had shared mine as well. And one of the things that we both came to the conclusion of was that there had to be a more centralized focus on students. A lot of what we were talking about, a lot of what came up in conversation, was more so about adults, and that's not necessarily the purpose of that. We serve children here in the district, and a lot of what we talked about was getting lost in translation. You know, and I did appreciate the fact of what she had brought to the table and some of her struggles that she has been facing within the community and within her congregation. But some of those things aren't necessarily what we're facing within our district at this particular moment. So we did come to the conclusion that we had to relook at the overall goal of how we approach diversity, equity, and inclusion within our district, and that is more of a centralized focus on students and on children. And how does it impact them on their daily life, whether it be in their academics or whether it be in their social interactions with each other? So that's currently where we are right now. And one of the things that we did talk about was that it's not necessarily off the table with looking at what other districts have done and trying to find something that is worked, that has worked very well. These are very heated... They can be heated conversations, and they're not easy conversations, and there's no right conversation to this. But we did come to the conclusion that our focus has to be more so on the children rather than the adults, and maybe looking towards some other districts and how they actually have handled this could be a guiding light for us in this district.
Thank you. I look forward to seeing what happens.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Grosso.
Sure.
Next, we have Michelle Mariello.
Good evening. Michelle Mariello, 51 Bennett Ave, Cedar Grove. I know there's been a lot of controversy the last few weeks regarding the new health curriculum and the standards that were recommended for various grades. Mr. Grosso, you did touch upon that, so I know that you said that it was going to be age-appropriate, but I already have a list of questions, so I'll just ask them, and if it was answered, fine. With that being said, how does Cedar Grove plan to handle the teaching?
Excuse me, Mrs. Mariello. Just pull the microphone down.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. With that being said, how does Cedar Grove plan to handle the teaching of these standards? And will the parents be able to opt out of the teachings?
Go ahead.
Oh, should I? Oh, all right. Okay. All right. I would also like to know what resources the district will be using when teaching these standards. And I know that there was one that was published out in the media, and it was amaze.org, and it's a sexual health resource and has some really highly inappropriate videos. So, will the teachers be using this? Will parents have the option to look at specific lesson plans? And will this be cross-curricular? Or will it only be taught in health? If it is cross-curricular, how will the teachers be trained to handle uncomfortable topics, tough lessons, and will they be able to answer things objectively opposed to subjectively? And, like, I know, Mr. Grosso, East Hanover is handling this, and that is a district that is kind of close to us, by teaching these standards on the last day of school within the last half hour. And is this something that Cedar Grove would entertain? I don't know why that's so funny, but...
Okay. Well, I think some of the questions you answered in your statement, but if you'd like to address whatever ones you did not.
Sure. So, I'll try to... If I miss something, just let me know. So I head down here, teaching of the standards. So, overall, what I shared earlier was, this is the... It's the Department of Education's guidance on what they have adopted as standards. So, they could share with each district in New Jersey what they feel the health standards are. It is up to the individual local education agency to look at those standards and then adopt a curriculum that fits our needs for our community. And again, I stressed heavily over and over again, because I am aware of the controversy that is surrounding this, and I believe the governor's aware of this as well, since the governor had to go back and ask for a retooling of the pre-K through two standards. But what we... Our goal here is, is to take into consideration the age level of our students and the appropriateness of what we will be teaching our students. Yes, the state of New Jersey does share with us their guidance.
Right.
And their standards, and we certainly take that into consideration. But when we develop our curriculum, we will develop a curriculum that, again, is appropriate for the students that are receiving this information. Now, when it comes to opting out, the health and phys... The health and sex ed and health curriculum is the one curriculum in New Jersey that parents do have the opportunity to opt out of, and it's a state statute.
Right.
So, really, all that has to happen is, is that a parent simply has to write a letter to their school principal sharing that they decided to opt out of that curriculum, sex ed, et cetera.
Right.
It doesn't have to be detailed, doesn't have to have any specific reasons to it. They just can opt out of that. So if a parent wants to do that, and I've had, as a principal, I've had that happen many times.
Right.
The alternative to that is, is that there will be... The child doesn't get off from that class, or... But there will be supplemental curriculum pieces.
Like an alternative lesson.
An alternative to that, which doesn't deal with those subject matters. I wrote something down. Resources, you're a resources... I can't even read my own writing. Resources. There's multiple resources out there.
Right.
You spoke about...
Amaze. I mean, I know that's the one in the news that's, you know...
Right. So that's the media creating that and sharing that with the public. That doesn't mean that we are following that.
Right. But what is... Is that will they be... Will there be a protocol that you have in place that teachers aren't going to use that or, you know, like, you know, as a supervisor, say, like a curricular supervisor will say, okay, this is how we're rolling it out? You know?
Yeah, no...
As a teacher, I could pull different materials, you know, online and use them in my classroom. Is there going to be a set of materials that teachers are going to be able to pull to use to teach this curriculum? Opposed to, oh, Amaze has a great video on, you know, this topic? You know, is that something that Cedar Grove is not going to be able to access? Or, you know?
Right. So, Mr. Gogarty is in charge of all health, K through 12, and Mr. Pearson has been working heavily with Mr. Gogarty as well. And so what they are looking at are appropriate resources for our students that will engage them on those lessons. It doesn't mean, like I said, you know, there's lots of different things out there.
Right.
There's actually a lot of different resources out there for teaching math and teaching language arts. We don't necessarily use them because we don't really necessarily find them to be appropriate.
Right.
I will share that, you know, some of our regular curricular, you know, resources are, again, are not exactly what I would call as high quality. So, yes, there's lots of things out there, but we will be very diligent in looking at what those resources are and how they can be implemented appropriately, again, for those students. Less... I have down here, lesson plan, and cross-curricular. When we look at creating this, we're specifically talking about the health and physical education standards, not necessarily looking at... When you look at the 2020 health and phys ed standards, it doesn't necessarily say that they are cross-curricular. Now, I'll give an example of something that the state of New Jersey doesn't want us to do that is cross-curricular is climate change. Climate change, they want us to implement that into world language and sciences and language arts and et cetera, so...
I'm aware, because in middle school, they had to talk about it in Spanish class.
Yes. And sometimes that's very difficult to fit in.
Of course.
You know, such when we look at world language, how do we do that? Maybe it's a cultural piece, but what we're specifically talking about is the health and phys ed standards, and those health and phys ed standards are specifically set for just that content area, not looking to bring it into language arts, not looking to bring it into physics, not looking to bring it into any type of math class. It is specifically...
I know that when Mr. Pearson did present at the meeting when the curriculum, I think it was 2020 when it was approved, he did refer to the Outsiders book when discussing gender roles, and that's...
That's different, though.
Is cross-curricular.
That's different, because that is more so for the diversity, equity, and inclusive practices that the state is looking to infuse within all subject areas.
Right.
What I'm talking specifically about is when you're looking at sexual education, that's not necessarily something you would make as cross-curricular.
Right.
And I just want to add, Mrs. Mariello, Cedar Grove also uses the Atlas. Our curriculum is uploaded in Atlas, which is accessible on our website.
Yes.
Which provides the scope and sequence on all of our curriculum areas.
So, like, once this curriculum...
Yes. As the curriculum work is done, it will be uploaded into the Atlas.
Great.
So, the community will have the opportunity.
And before we even present this to our students, it would be something that would be a part of the... It would be presented to the curriculum committee, and then it's voted on and approved by the Board of Education.
Great. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And last, we have, but not least, Mr. Martinelli.
John Martinelli, 30 Hillside Avenue. If you guys could bear with me, I really want to get this all across, but I have to tell a story because it applies to the terminology and it applies to an event or a meeting that happened. So, my personal experience with an individual, I just want to bring that to light and then how we apply it, because I'm 62, I'm a little behind the times, and I need to get up to speed with some of the new terminology today and what it means, because sometimes a word that I look as being a certain way is no longer that way, so I got to keep, you know, up to speed. So I'm going to begin with this. Here's a picture I want to show you. Okay? This is me, and this is my friend Clyde. Okay? Just want to show you. Right? And I wrote something on there. I wrote something on... I shared something on social media I felt was uplifting and inspiring in light of what the current atmosphere is around town and other places. I'm sorry. Thank you. And Clyde, my buddy Clyde, and I felt what the world need now in love and compassion instead of division. Right? So, we want to explain our experience. Before you judge somebody based on how they look, okay? The only difference between these two individuals is the tone of their skin. Now, things in common. We both share the same values on life and how to respect others. One is not a victim, and one is not an oppressor. We grew up in New York during racially charged times in the 1960s and 70s. He grew up in the Bronx. I grew up in Brooklyn. We went to school when Dr. Martin Luther King was murdered. We both endured much racism, which may come to a shock to some because I'm white. He was my best man at my wedding. When I went to a divorce, he was going to a divorce at the same time. I had nowhere to go. He took me in. I lived with him over a year and a half. So he became my best man at my wedding, and we are still best friends today. So all we're saying is, and this is him talking with me, because he'll come here, okay? He lives in South Jersey. Before you judge either one of us, please walk in our shoes. As Big Sal Manieri say, wisdom comes with age. So now, for what I just said, I want... I appreciate if you can answer some of these questions, because I showed Clyde some of the stuff that's in the Cedar Grove curriculum. Okay? And the first thing is oppression. A term used to describe systems, relations, and behaviors which disadvantaged groups or individuals through formal institutional or informal attitudes and behaviors. Oppression fuses institutional and systematic discrimination, personal bias, bigotry, and social prejudice in a complex web of relationships and structures. So this is either to Mr. Grosso or whoever else wants to answer it. Since my children are biracial, are they an oppressor or oppressed? Which one? Just write these down, please. Prejudice. Okay. A prejudgment of unjustifiable, usually negative attitude of one type of individual or groups toward another group and its members. Such negative attitudes are typically based on unsupported generalizations or stereotypes that deny the right of an individual members and certain groups to be recognized and treated as individuals with individual characteristics. Okay. Wouldn't then white privilege, and my friend says, and the N-word, apply to this? Privilege. Okay. An advantage granted to available only for a particular person, group of people, a systematic benefit, dominantly identified group. White privilege, straight privilege, Christian privilege, cisgender privilege, such as greater power, government, and land. Okay. So, my question then is, wouldn't some minority groups in this country have privilege through the use of quotas in the workplace and application to higher education? Why do 40% of white students put minority status applying to college? Why is there here...
Mr. Martinelli?
Yes?
I can't have you read the whole curriculum today.
No, no, I'm not. I'm just reading one more, and I'm gone.
And these are questions that we can't... We're not going to be answering.
Okay. Then I... This is in reference to a webinar. And could I finish this?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
This is a webinar that some of our educators attended. I just had a couple of questions on definitions. What they... I'm just asking what they mean, if somebody can answer.
I don't know if I can answer them, but go ahead.
Okay.
Please be brief, if you can.
Thank you. I want to educate myself on some of the terms used today. White noise, allied theater, white fragility, aspiring white allies, the white savior complex. An educator at a meeting said that standard children of all races prefer a teacher of color. Is that true? You were introduced later at a meeting that was hired at Cedar Grove, and this pertains to the meeting you attended, Mr. Grosso. It says you're going to do some heavy lifting. Could you explain what that means? And lastly...
I'm going to stop you for a minute.
I don't even know what to refer to.
Mr. Martinelli, do you recall that you and I had a two-and-a-half-hour meeting in my office?
Yes, I did.
And I did explain those things to you?
No, not these...
I did, because you read off that piece of...
Not not these terms.
Mr. Martinelli, you read off that piece of paper... I want to refresh your memory. You read off that piece of paper. I answered your questions. You shared with me your position on that, and I shared with you the details. I answered all of your questions. So, Mr. Martinelli, why are you asking those questions again?
No, these questions... These terms were not answered. These terms were not answered. The terms I'm saying here, white noise, allied theater, white fragility...
But those aren't... Those are not my words, Mr. Martinelli.
No, I know. I'm just asking, do you know what they mean? I'm just asking. I don't know what the terms mean.
So it's not the place. All right. Mr. Martinelli, I've been advised that this is not the place to have these conversations because some of the concepts that you're referring to are way beyond Cedar Grove High School or Cedar Grove School District. I'm sorry. They're national...
Oh, I understand that, but some educators were at this meeting, so I wanted to educate myself. That's all.
He does not have to answer that.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes that portion of the meeting. As far as announcements of future meetings, please note that the next meeting is May 24. There is a change in that date, right? It was originally the 17th, I believe, but it was... Is being changed to the 24th.
I answered your questions. You shared with me your position on that, and I shared with you the details. I answered all of your questions. So, Mr. Martinelli, why are you asking those questions again?
No, these questions, these terms were not answered. These terms were not answered. The terms I'm saying here, white noise, allied theater, white fragility.
But those aren't, those are not my words, Mr. Martinelli.
No, I know. I'm just asking, do you know what they mean? I'm just asking. I don't know what the terms mean.
So it's not the place. All right. Mr. Martinelli, I've been advised that this is not the place to have these conversations because some of the concepts that you're referring to are way beyond Cedar Grove High School, or Cedar Grove School District, I'm sorry. They're national.
No, I understand that, but some educators were at this meeting, so I wanted to educate myself. That's all.
No, no. He doesn't have to answer.
He does not have to answer that.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes that portion of the meeting. As far as announcements of future meetings, please note that the next meeting is May twenty-fourth. There is a change in that date, right? It was originally the seventeenth, I believe, but it was, is being changed to the twenty-fourth. And then the following meeting will be June fifteenth. Closed session will be at six-thirty. Regular meeting will be at seven-thirty. Thank you, everyone. Motion to adjourn.
You need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Get that all the time. Meeting adjourned.